Welcome to City of Fairhope Council Meeting. We're going to start off with Reverend William Parsons III from Redeemer Lutheran Church with the prayer, followed by the pledge.
Let us pray in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Amen. Heavenly Father, Guardian and Keeper of your people, watch over those who are entrusted with the administration of the City of Fairhope. Make them pure and honest, keep them from temptation or bribery, from favoritism or prejudice, from indolence or neglect of duty, creating them an earnest desire to serve faithfully, attend their efforts, that their work may not suffer from mediocrity, permit them to experience the joys of noble service completed for a grateful people, encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who helped to serve, and use every willing service and every effort to put forth for good government. Bless and rule over your people and that your will may be accomplished among them, and promote all the things that are for the good of this community and your kingdom. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, council, to start the meeting tonight, first item of business is to approve the minutes of the January 24 regular city council meeting and the work session from January 24.
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any amendments or changes to those minutes? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Mayor, your report.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank everybody who came out for the state of the city last week. I thought it was a great event, really well attended, and really appreciate the departments and all the work and effort they put into making sure their booths are set up, and I just think it's a great time for our citizens to really interact with the employees and be able to ask those one-on-one questions. So, thank you to the staff and thank you to everybody else who came out for that. Also Arbor Day, we celebrated Arbor Day on Saturday, and I think Councilman Conyers and Burrell were there, and just a great, another great event, record turnout, we gave away some beautification awards and poster contests. Poster contest winner Catherine Giddings was there, designed a great poster, and just, you know, just a good event and glad to be there. Master gardeners participated, giving away seedlings, so hopefully we can replace some of those trees that we lost during Sally. And also we have Monte Grau coming up this week, excited about that. It's nice to be able to be back and doing things normal as we have in the past. So we have two parades on Saturday, we have the MMOR and the KOER. For the MMOR, that parade route, the streets will close at 2:00, and they will stay, they will stay closed throughout the duration of the day until the KOER parade. So want to make sure people pay attention to the street closings, we're going to have some additional signs, and also barricades up because we are barricading a large majority of our route this year because of a grant we got for barricades. So make sure people pay attention to that. And just want to report to the council also that the symbol clinic, the employee help clinic, will hopefully open on Monday, February 21st. We will hold an open house at that clinic for the employees, and hopefully the council will be able to attend as well on March the 4th to just kind of highlight the services that they'll be offering, and that building really has turned out nice, and look forward to being able to offer that service to our employees. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And council, before we move into public participation, I do have two resolutions that we would like to consider walking on to the agenda tonight. The first item Jessica presented, and this was related to the filming of Jesus Revolution, and we covered this in the work session, and then the second item was also covered in the work session, and this relates to blast and soccer. So would council be interested in adding either or both of those items to the agenda?
I move to add both resolutions to tonight's agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to add those items to the agenda. Any further discussion or commentary? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of adding the items to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. We will make, Jesus Revolution will now be item number 35, and the blast, the soccer league will be item number 36. Thank you, council. Now we will open the floor to public participation. We've got two public hearings, so this is agenda item seven, 7 through 36. If you wish to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address and speak to whichever item you want to address. Floor is open. All right, seeing no one, we will go ahead and close the floor for public participation. Next item is council comments, Councilman Burrell.
I have a question for either the mayor or Richard Johnson, and I apologize I was late to the work session. So, Richard, you may have covered this, but I wanted to know the status of Church Street with the parades coming up. Will that be paved, is it going to be dirt, and is it going to stop at Harrow Avenue?
And I'll kind of give you the 30-second recap of what we discussed, just so you know, they paved half of the block today, they will have the other half paved no later than noon on Wednesday. There are a few areas of missing sidewalk that had gravel, they're going to be paved with the temporary asphalt patch, so we have a hard surface. And then basically the contractor understands that by the close of business Wednesday, they're off the street, their equipment, materials, that kind of thing, and they will stay out of town until after Arts and Crafts Festival.
And as we did discuss in the work session, I think there's some potential changes that we may want to not open the public hearing, introduce this, talk about the changes, and if the council agrees, the appropriate action would send that back, we re-advertise, come back before you. But to kind of bring this before you in the details, as we, it's being presented to you and advertised, this is within the special districts, we do have a section for the central business district overlay. And here, we're kind of showing how that fits within the uses section of the CBD, and we'll kind of break that down where we can see that a little bit easier. I'll briefly touch on, this did, was at the planning commission twice, so it was heard once, and then asked for revisions, came back to us, these were the things that were addressed. And then, in essence, what we were trying to accomplish with some of these revisions, there is no, we didn't want to limit when a one- or two-story building has a rooftop terrace or outdoor event space, or just that third floor on top of the building, there was no intentions to really limit those. They're falling under the definitions of what's allowed within the CBD, under 40 feet, three stories, so there shouldn't be restrictions there. What we were looking at was when you have a third-story, three-story building and allowing a rooftop terrace on that, there should be some allowances and further restrictions. So that's the section that really has the teeth within this, is what you see on the screen. The, for the purposes of this definition, there is, a rooftop terrace is not considered a story. Why that's important, under building code, when they go and build, that is a story. So our ordinance only allows three stories in the building, or in the zoning ordinance. So that was important there. Everything that has to be under 40 feet, but what we've seen with some challenges on roof access, through elevator shaft stairwells, that's been a challenge to accomplish. So we wanted to allow that, but have some restrictions on that. So where we landed was the elevator shaft and/or stairwell can exceed the 40 feet, by no more than five feet, but that area under roof cannot be comprised of more than seven and a half percent of the rooftop. And then their other structures with, on top of the rooftop shall be limited to 33%, but those have to all fall below the 40-foot height limit, so no exception to the height limit there. Just kind of a, we did provide a 10-foot minimum location from the lot line, where that applies, if someone's building up to the lot line, the elevator shaft has to be 10 foot away. So, and just these hand-sketched items here, that gives you the kind of three options. If their, if their building is 10 foot off the lot line, well, they can build right up to the building's edge. So, and then, of course, we did have the fourth stipulation in here, where no temporary structures such as tents, awnings, and umbrellas are prohibited on rooftop terraces. And then there was a defined term within the definitions section of our zoning ordinance that defines exactly what a rooftop terrace is. So with some of the conversations we've had, I believe, the teeth of the changes, and I think we wouldn't have had to re-advertise this if it was not, if it was only the change in percentage, in section C on the screen, I believe the request was to reduce that from 33% coverage to 25%. And then the, where the teeth was more into the temporary structures. So, you know, the way I think Planning Commission was thinking about this was the umbrellas, the, somebody rents a 10-by-10 or purchases one at the exporting goods and brings it and sets it on top of the roof, that was the intent. But I do believe, through conversations, there is means for people to actually do that, maybe incorporate it into the building so that it is safe. And I think the direction we are heading, if agreeable, is we would have a section that specifically states what would be allowed under temporary structures, set up some processes for those to be limited to 24 hours, how they would permit through the city, and also some stipulations on what wind ratings and things like that would be. So I'd like to have that conversation with council. One of the things we don't want to do is, you know, if there is a space that's a venue or something that temporary structures could be installed on, I don't want it to be a mom-and-daughter combination setting up for a wedding and just purchase a 10-by-10 tent and have to prove that it holds a wind rating, you know, the day before a wedding. So what Eric and I have talked about is, you know, that probably needs to be designed when the building is permitted or approved, and how that's going to be accommodated for. That's the only really way we can, we can make sure something meets that 60 mile-an-hour wind, or has anchors in the roof, or something along those lines. So that's what we would like to write into the language of what we're considering right now, but I'll kind of leave my conversation, and we'll welcome any feedback, the council may have.
Councilman Burrell, I know you've been working on this, some, do you have any...
Council President?
Need to introduce ordinance.
Somebody needs to introduce it.
I didn't think we were going to introduce this.
That's it.
I think you have to introduce it in order to...
To even discuss it.
To discuss it.
Introduce it, not open the public...
We're not going to have a public hearing tonight, because that would be more like March 28. All right, would someone like to introduce ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Simmons, first of all, I like the changes. I think they're moving in the right direction, because I thought that, you know, the prohibition of the temporary structures was, you know, if it's handled right, you can, you can make it nice. If you have any event space and people are out there in July and in Fairhope, it's going to be hot if they don't have any shade, and so wouldn't be much purpose to be up there. But can we go back to the statement of, keep it right there, what they're under B, it says, where it talks about the enclosed areas shall not cover more than seven and a half percent of total square footage of the rooftop, shall not be viewable from public right-of-way, rights-of-way? Do we need to be a little more specific and say public rights-of-way adjacent to the building, because God forbid you get two people that are competing for a rooftop terrace, and somebody walks to the other end of their town and says, "I can see that, I can see that above the roofline," and you're in violation of the ordinance. It says public right-of-way, you could, you know, maybe you're going up or down a hill, you know, if you're on top of the hill, you may be able to see it. So I don't know that that was the intent, do we need to sharpen that language by a few words?
Sure. I think adjacent would imply...
Isn't that the intent?
Or abutting might be the more appropriate word.
Right in front of the building. Right in front of the building. Because if you walked 100 feet away, you could probably see it.
Yeah, I think that, always debate on the adjacent and abutting, I don't think it matters in this situation.
I know some people argue, keep it simple, but, you know, there's a reason that your mortgage is 30 pages long.
So we can get that language modified maybe before re-advertising and...
Yes. You know, just with the advertising, the way it works out this time, if we got it Wednesday would be the earliest we can get it to the newspaper. They would run it the following two weeks, and then we have to wait 15 days. That would be two days past the council meeting on March 14th. So we actually buy some time, we can get, have a week to work on these revisions and get it and meet the same deadline.
And any other comments or any other suggested changes while we have an opportunity?
Not for me.
No?
Councilman Bean?
Good.
Councilman Burrell, you good with everything else?
All right. Thank you, sir. I guess we'll move on to the next item, and the next item is a public hearing, and this is also on zoning ordinance number 1253, and this is a proposed amendment to change and alter the City of Fairhope zoning ordinance to, relating to residential accessory structures. And this was covered in the work session, but Hunter, if you wouldn't mind...
Sure.
Going ahead and addressing again.
I'm going to, I'll show this table, I'm going to jump over to a picture, I think it's easier to understand, but we do have a Table 33, the dimension table, within our zoning ordinance deals with residential accessory structures. And something we've kind of dealt with, this is, this actually stemmed from the Board of Adjustment with hardships typically that allow variants is run with the land, so they're more about how the land is shaped, size, shape, topography, those type things, not what's built on the land. And it was, the goal was, when you had a historic, single-story home, we do not allow accessory structures to be taller than the principal building. And there, someone can tear a historic home down, build a two-story building, and then build a, the same accessory building at the same height. The image shows an example, and we've had a few cases like this, it's not a home here, this is made up, example, but if you have, for example, a 27-foot home, and someone wants to put an accessory building, a garage with a room above it, the 27 feet is the height limit. We're proposing amendment here that would give administrative review and allow staff to review situations such as this, and allow the accessory building to be taller than the principal building by no more than five feet, but in no case can it be higher than the height limit of that district. So in the example shown, five feet would allow a 32-foot building, but because the height limit's 30 feet, 30, or the 30 feet would be the height limit, three feet higher than the principal building. We don't want to create situations where we're allowing accessory structures hovering over, so meeting the intent of why that ordinance is there, but giving some flexibility, this is especially, we see this on a somewhat regular basis within the fruit and nut area Sure, it can happen in other parts of town, but we don't see those coming before the Board of Adjustment often. So the language is just a footnote within the dimension table that reads, in an attempt to preserve historic one-story structures on lots where the principal structure is one-story, an administrative approval may be given to allow an accessory structure to be taller than the principal structure, but in no case more than five foot, taller than the principal structure as measured from the tallest roof peak of the principal structure, excluding chimneys, copulas, spires, and other architectural features. In no case shall accessory structure exceed 30 feet. And that's the extent of the proposed amendment. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that one.
And Lisa, do we need to introduce this ordinance as well?
She do.
Would somebody like to...
I'll introduce it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Burrell. Ordinance has been introduced. Any questions or comments for Hunter before we open the public hearing? All right, we'll go ahead and open the floor if anyone from the public would wish to address this proposed ordinance. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any further discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and let this lay over. Thank you, Hunter. Not to go away yet, but we got your back on here again.
Mm-hmm. You know it's bad when I have to bring a water bottle up there.
The next item, next item up is final adoption of ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number 1253, and this is a request to rezone the property of Percy Dale to R1 low-density single-family to HTD, which is the Highway Transition District, with staff recommendations. Property generally located on the west side of Greeno Road, south of Carter Lane, at 19327 Greeno Road in Fairhope. Yes, sir.
And I'm going to move through the, these, my presentation in these three, assuming we've had lots of conversation, and we'll open it up to council questions if you have them. This is, as shown on the map, it's currently R1. The Highway Transitional District was adopted to create an option for those historic R1 properties that lie between the village centers that provide a more appropriate use along Greeno Road especially, but does not impact the, or does not veer from the goals of the comprehensive plan. This went through the Planning Commission unanimously with a recommended vote of six to zero, voting to recommend approval of this zoning change.
All right, council members, does anyone have any questions for Hunter on this request? Or any comments? All right, would anyone like to make a motion on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Clark, if you will, call the question.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Hunter. Next item up is also final adoption ordinance, and this is to request to rezone, or to zone the John Albert Watkins Jr., Hilliard Vaughn Street III, and Sunny Hill LLC property to R2 medium-density, single-family concurrent with annexation into the City of Fairhope with staff recommendations. And the property is generally located east of County Road 13 and south of County Road 34, so at the southeast corner of 13 and 34. Yes, sir.
So this, we also talked about, I'll kind of show that location, this is adjacent to the city parkland that was purchased recent, in the last couple of years, that's what you see in yellow on the map on the left, you see the farmland and its connection to some unzoned subdivision of very similar size lots, those are mostly 75-foot wide lots, which is, falls in line with what R2 is in the proposed lot sizes. Just kind of getting to a, this was originally presented as a PUD. The lot sizes, the really, the intent of a PUD is to create something special, there was a little bit of a, basically it was a five-foot difference in a setback was the request, when we got, I think the applicant started looking at some building plans that could work within this, and R2 would be a, an easier solution. Just for reference, this was the PUD plan that was presented. This may or may not work, we didn't really get into too big of a detail, but we will, I'm sure, see a follow-up application that meets R2 once approved, that'll come straight to, as a subdivision, preliminary plat to the Planning Commission. We did recommend approval, with two conditions, that a traffic study shall be provided that includes all traffic generated by greenfields with the first application for preliminary plat. Fairhope Water and Sewer provided availability letters, but connections to existing infrastructure, including routes and potential infrastructure upgrades, shall be approved by the Fairhope Water and Sewer Superintendent prior to some middle of a preliminary plat. The Planning Commission unanimously have recommended approval of this project with a vote of six yays and zero nays. That should be ayes instead of yays.
All right. Any questions for Hunter on this proposal?
You know, Hunter, I'm going to ask the question, maybe just for our citizens, this is, this was unzoned county land, correct?
That is correct.
And we get very few applications these days, it seems like, for even R2, and what was the average lot size for this? Do you recall?
75-foot is the width, 10,005...
Do you know square footage, by chance, wasn't it?
10,500 is the minimum lot size. So we'll see when the preliminary plat comes up, what, you know, there'll be some bigger...
Yeah, I recall, they weren't the smallest, R2, they tended to be somewhere, you know, even over on the higher side.
Yeah.
Kind of, a little closer, if I should say, to R1 than the minimum R2.
And in the, in the plan that you see here, you see more internally, where there's a grid, you can match the 10,500 pretty, pretty good, but as you see, when you start getting into curves and things like that, you're going to have larger lots.
My point is, though, you know, nobody in Fairhope that I know of, unless you're a developer, wants to see another subdivision. But our choices are to approve this, or deny it, in which case they can stay in the county and have no, you know, no subdivision regulations governing what they do. They can build, they could go R3 if they wanted, they could maybe even go R5 if they wanted.
That's correct.
That's what we run into with every application.
And we did evaluate, I think, we've, we've had many requests from Graythorne and Miller's Crossing to annex into the city, but they're not contiguous. This actually does tie into those subdivisions to the south, and would potentially, it may be not all at once, but would allow that domino effect to happen.
All right, any, any further questions or comments for Hunter? Would anyone like to make a motion for final adoption?
So moved.
A second. All right, we've got a motion and a second for final adoption. Clark, if you would, call the question.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Hunter. Next item up is also another ordinance for amending of zoning, and this is to request to amend ordinance number 1596 and rename, and to rename the property of Burgess, a Thomason Jr., a planned unit development known as Thomason PUD to Montrose Preserve PUD. The property is generally located on the west side of US 98, and from the south side of Adams Street to just south of Ledyard Street in Fairhope, Alabama, with staff recommendations. Hunter, if you would, sir.
Thank you. So, little background on this one, this was a PUD that was approved in 2017 that consisted of 77 total lots. The proposed amendment reduces that number of total lots from 77 to 18, on the same acreage of 53.94 acres, roughly density of .33 units per acre is the proposed. The sites are shown on the zoning right now, you see the light blue that does reference our PUD, and then the aerial on the right shows the current state of that property. The existing site plan, some went through many iterations and reviews through Planning Commission and City Council, there was concerns from the adjacent historic Montrose area of what, what would become of that property, and some of the key points with that PUD was there's no connection to the roads, and historic roads that lie adjacent. The proposed site plan is what we see on the screen, it's hard to kind of zoom into some of those things, but what we're attempting to accomplish here is a site plan-driven PUD that will follow up with preliminary plat that makes it work. Not every answer is addressed here, being county right-of-way... Not every answer is addressed here, being county right-ofways. Right now, what solution it ultimately becomes is, will be figured out if this is approved. That would be the next step as a follow-up. But there's stipulations here on no connectivity and access. How they provide for that would be forthcoming and would be heard at the Planning Commission for preliminary plat. Otherwise, it mimics R2 as a base zoning, or I'm sorry, R1 as a base zoning, single-family residential. The, there's a couple of tweaks there. Their fencing has some standard, extra conditions. The utilities, Fairhope provides sewer. Daphne actually provides water in this area, with Riviera providing power and AT&amp;T for telecommunications. There was a buffer added that mimics the historic PUD, and the applicant agreed to keep that within for Greeno and what you're seeing from Greeno Road. There is a 40-foot preservation buffer and visual screen buffer. The preliminary plat will have to follow up the, with all lots and connecting each lot within the preliminary plat. They can be phased in construction, but the first preliminary plat will have to provide that connectivity as an approved plan and how that will be facilitated. I did receive, there were some conversations last, two weeks ago, about particularly Taylor Street. There is a driveway within that right-of-way. There was an alternate plan submitted that shows kind of a Y-intersection that gives some, a little bit more of a buffer in case that it's needed. The applicant volunteered this, so I think that potentially addresses some of the options. And I do want to touch on, a little bit on the follow-up procedures here. If the council approves a PUD, when we see the follow-up preliminary plat, it needs to match this. It will, and there's substantial conformance. I'll tell you one thing that could potentially happen. If we can't figure out the right-of-way issue, then that access road might actually move, could move on to the property itself, and they have an easement there. So it could move further away, but not in any instance do we suspect that would be any closer to the backs of those properties. There was also a question about a condition in here that this reverts to the PUD approved in 2017. We did explore, don't like the creating oppression of negating our sunset rules. Would like to keep the condition as presented to you two weeks ago. And with that said, same conditions we read two weeks ago. I'll be happy to answer any questions on those, but won't read them for, since we've already went through that. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Council members, any questions for Hunter on this proposed zoning amendment?
There were a couple of items we discussed. One was the reversion clause. And I know that I had asked whether it should revert back to the previously approved PUD, I believe, which would be in keeping with what happened. But I asked whether it should revert back to the previous zoning, which was R1. Not really sure how that would violate anything, but I think you told me that there may be some other reasons for it to revert back to the PUD that had been approved. But there was something else. What was the other?
That was the follow-up. So the, kind of the site plan we're approving here, making sure that's actually done and built that way. And that's what the follow-up, that's the condition that's here.
Is that in here now?
Yeah, it was here last time. I just maybe didn't explain that well enough. The reason for condition number one, where a preliminary plat shall provide that street access to every lot, that will be done at Planning Commission at once. Instead of being piecemealed and doing three lots at a time, there will be a preliminary plat that shows every lot and access and how that's facilitated. Now, there can be phased construction that they actually choose to do three lots at a time, but the preliminary plat will show the overall design that it matches this PUD.
Oh, I know the other one was like, I was asking, you know, it should be substantial conformance with not only the street layout, but as with the lot layout.
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's, the only thing I can see changing in there, and I think it's a potential option, three of those lots can be merged and part of that road could go away. So that, I don't foresee fears on that. Anything that would change substantially, you know, if there was those lots merged and tried to develop, that would have to come back as a PUD amendment. So anything different than the approved in the site plan?
Okay. And Hunter, I wasn't here two weeks ago for the public hearing. I know in the past, a few years ago, when this was being proposed, it had gone back and forth quite a bit between the developer and some of the nearby residents. They actually showed up in support of the proposed PUD a couple of years ago. What was the, what was the reaction? I mean, I would think that going from 77 lots to 18 would be, would be popular, but I don't want to assume anything.
And I don't want to speak for anything, but I think overall, the, it's certainly a welcome project as long as kind of the promises that are, you know, no connectivity and remaining those large lots are, goals are met. I think it's in favor. But as, and that's kind of the revision back to the 77 lot. At least there was a public process where that plan was approved. And at the end of the day, everybody could live with that plan. So as a fallback for reverting to that, I think that's a good safeguard.
Okay. Councilman, any further questions for Hunter? Councilman Robinson, Councilman Bing, any questions?
Still not. Still not sure I agree with you, Hunter, on reverting back to 70-something lots versus R1. I just, that's not the same thing to me. It sounds to me like maybe you don't want to go through the process again. That's kind of what's.
No, sir. What we're trying to avoid here is this going back to the historic lots of record with right-of-ways that go through ditches in the city, being asked to put streets and bridges in. That's the protection in place. So with a site plan overriding that, there's got to come to a solution. And we're kind of getting out of the way here and seeing if that solution can be met.
I hope Bill will never come to that.
No, no, I don't, I don't think.
Not ever come to that anyway, right?
No. I think this is a good plan, and we just, being right-of-ways in different hands, you know, let's get out of the way and see if we can come up with a solution that gets to this end result.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Would anyone like to make a recommendation or?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for final adoption. City clerk, if you would, call the question.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you presenting for quite a while this evening.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Tell Lindsay we appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Being on loan. Next item up is final adoption of ordinance to amend ordinance number 1551. And this is a request to amend specifically Chapter 2, Article 3 of Boards and Committees, Section 2-181, the mission of the Historic Preservation Committee. Councilman Robinson, I know you've been the most recent liaison to that. If you wouldn't mind just giving a real quick overview?
Sure. This amendment just allows them to expand their reach to include, and their mission to include education and the assistance of those who are seeking to go through the historic preservation process. It doesn't change much. It gives them a little bit more, an opportunity for education as opposed to a more singular focus.
Okay. Councilmen, do y'all have any questions for Councilman Robinson on that explanation? Would someone like to make a motion for final adoption?
Move for final adoption.
All right. We've got a motion.
Second.
And we've got a second. Clark, if you would, call the question.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Next item up is an ordinance, and this is amend ordinance number 953 and ordinance number 1658 to request to amend Chapter 21, Article 3 for water, replacing Section 21-32 for connection fees and expenses. And this is part of the Fairhope Code of Ordinances. Jason, I know we've covered this in work session in the prior meetings. Does anybody have any questions for Jason? Would anyone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right. Introduce the ordinance. Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Jason, would you mind just giving a quick overview since Councilman Burrell was not in?
Yeah, and I think it's good to do it in the actual.
In the actual meeting. Yeah.
The water fees, STCs we talked about in the work session, and then 101 as well. The only thing that is added because the original ordinance had it in is the tap fee or installation fee, connection fee.
Bless you.
Originally, the three-quarter was $500. This takes it to $100 for a three-quarter water service, and that's because of the cost of materials and everything has gone up, so. Another thing has happened since the previous lead removal of all brass, which caused that price to go up. So there's several factors of why our brass fittings are costing more today. So this doesn't look like they're going to be going down.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Jason?
Didn't they change names? You're changing the title of them, right?
It's STC, yes, sir, System Development Charges.
System Development Charges.
Instead of Asset Fee, I think, in the old Capacity Asset Fee.
So if I look at, looking at, say, a two-inch, the old one for commercial was 11,250. And I'm trying to, and you have an $8,000 SDC fee now. And you have a tap fee. Is that what you were calling the installation fee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it was 20,500. It looks like it could be 13,000 now. So it actually went down considerably.
Yes, sir. For that size meter, it did. If you, the larger sizes, it actually increased. Yes, sir.
So the, on the three, where does it start to increase then?
Well, it should be on a six-inch. I haven't got the old chart in front of me, but it should be the six and eight.
Four-inch. Looks like the four-inch may have gone up. Everything, everything, it looks like everything below four-inch went down. Is that right, Mayor? Well, I'm sure he wished this had downloaded on my computer this morning when I was on the radio. I need to call Lori.
Print a retraction.
I need a print of correction. She said they're going up. And I said, yeah, they're probably going up. I should have said, no, a lot of them are going down.
I think a lot of this, too, is it takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. Where we spend a lot of our time is in the, in the former, you know, ordinance was calculating all those prices. Now, somebody can actually call in. We can put it online. They can, you know, see what the fees are, which will be a whole lot easier.
Yeah, I believe you mentioned you had staff that was spending a lot of time trying to calculate different quotes for people.
Well, it came to my, to, I say my phone or my office to do pricing, and I spent a lot of time with that. And this pretty much, this is flat. It gets it out. Everybody can understand that there's no calculations. There's no square root of the property line, which I know that's the way it's suicide, but. And it is in line with, as we talked in the other meetings and when I showed you the comparison charts of our neighbors, and everything is in line.
Kind of glossed over that, yeah. The tables are probably easy to follow, but then if you look at the verbiage that was in the old ordinance, yeah, like you said.
It was convoluted.
Half of this and two-thirds of that. Multiplied by the square root.
Well, does anyone have any further questions for Jason?
And we're also adding STCs for fire lines. Before, there was no charge, no fee, no anything for having a fire line run to a business. It was totally on them. They tapped our lines. They did whatever they, you know, whatever. There was no charge. But now there is an SDC for that capacity that's, really, you're calling it a stored capacity, so if that fire line is energized, so. And we also are, when we meet with them now, they have to work through us to do the tap. So that will be coming to you all shortly as well.
All right.
We've just had a lot of issues with the growth with contractors coming in, and I hate to use this terminology, but having their way. And we're stopping that because they're, I can think of what, just a few weeks ago, we had one contractor that was tapping lines in a subdivision and broke the sewer, and we had to cut the water off and go fix it because, and he's pretty much aware of where it was at in Fairhope Falls. And we've just got to stop it. It's got to be our, us doing it or it there on scene, you know, on site. So there's several things we're working on.
If nobody has any other questions on this particular ordinance for Jason, we'll let it lay over.
Did we introduce it?
Did introduce it. And we're going to follow that up with, the next item is ordinance, to amend ordinance number 953 and ordinance 1657. This is request to amend Chapter 21, Article 4 of Sewer, replacing Section 21-52 connection requirements and connection fees. Fairhope Code of Ordinances, basically the same thing, but for sewer. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Ordinance has been introduced. Jason?
This is the same deal we talked about, the STCs. Nothing's changed. You'll notice that there is a significant difference in STCs for sewer than water, once you get above the one-inch. And that's just because of the treatment capacity. You know, it just costs us more to treat the wastewater than it is per thousand for the water.
All right.
And the infrastructure is more expensive as well when you're going and extending sewer or upsizing sewer lines for this.
Does anybody have any questions for Jason?
And we're also adding installation fees. If on your, on mine, it's on the next page, but on yours, previously, there was no installation fees. You paid the capacity, the asset capacity or whatever fee that originally was. There was no installation fee for residential sewer. This adds the residential, or as we say, a tap fee.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
This is under number five. It was stricken that half of the tap fees shall be used for operating costs and half shall be used for capital replacements, improvements to the sewer system only. There's no language, so that will go into just the general operating account of sewer or will it go strictly to the capital improvement fund?
I left that to Kim and the mayor, but our recommendation was 100% go back into the capital improvement.
You want 100% of those fees back in the country?
STCs.
Yeah, because right now, half goes into your reserve for capital improvements, but whatever means, if you're putting 100%, then you want 100% of those fees.
That's our recommendation. As you all call what you want to do.
Should we under that five, you know, where it's stricken, say 100% of the SDC fees shall go into capital improvements? I think that's a good idea.
Both water and sewer.
Both water and sewer.
Okay. All right. Sounds good to me.
One thing that we might want to consider, and I know this would be for immediate, if we do immediate consideration, but one thing we might want to consider as we lay it over is what those fees are now that are going into?
Into operations. Because there are 50% that are going to operations.
Yes. So what happens is it turns through revenue, and then I move 50% of that revenue into the reserve.
Right. So would we want to do that in the next budget year? Because that's going to impact the current budget. Or we can look at that at the six-month review. But right now, that's going to impact operating expenses.
Let's, so that we don't have to change this again, I would suggest we say that 100%. Let's, so that we don't have to change this again, I would suggest we say that a hundred percent goes to the SDC. And if the council needs to approve, you know, some money being, going from the capital improvement fund to the operating fund, I think we can just do that with a simple resolution.
Yeah.
And we don't have to fool with the ordinance again.
It's hard to imagine that we won't need that money going into the system anyways.
No, and I do, I absolutely think it's a great idea, but I'm thinking about operations from, you know, for the next six months. So that's just something to consider.
Well, let's do that, what you're suggesting, Councilman, and then we can, we can always pull money from there if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a lot easier than changing an ordinance and having to put a time on when we are enforcing the ordinance.
All right. Any, any further questions or comments for Jason? All right, let's let this one lay over.
It will be.
Thank you, sir.
It will be roughly six months into the budget year before.
Before it's really.
Before it's even taking effect.
Exactly. Okay, I know it's Valentine's and y'all have dates tonight, so we'll try to move through this a little more quickly. Item number thirteen is a resolution that the city of Fairhope enters into an agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation, relating to project for the roundabout at North Section Street, Highway one oh-four, Veterans Drive, and Scenic ninety-eight. And Richard's covered this quite a bit. This is for the engineering to start that this year. The project itself would be slated for twenty-twenty-three. Does anybody have any questions for Richard on this item? He's covered it in today's work session and also in prior work sessions.
Make a motion.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Richard. Item number fourteen is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of SafeSpan LLC for professional engineering services for the biannual bridge inspection services for RFQ number PS oh-five dash twenty-two for the public works department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to negotiate the fee schedule. Counsel, any questions for Richard on this? This is just the biannual bridge inspection services. If not, would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, you got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Who's doing that now?
This may have done it the last two cycles.
Okay, great.
Same company. Okay. Any further conversation or discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifteen is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Garver LLC for professional engineering services for headworks, design, and treatment needs for the Fairhope Utilities wastewater treatment plant for RFQ PS zero-zero-eight dash twenty-two, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council. And this was mentioned by the mayor and by Jason earlier as one of four projects. And Councilman Burrell, I know you weren't here when we had this conversation, but one of four projects that we felt might meet the ARPA-adem funding requirements. So right now, we need to get the engineering going, but we have up until June first to apply for ARPA money for this project. We don't know what the match would be, but it would be, the max requirement would be fifty percent. Could be less than that. So it's a project we need to do anyways. So anybody have any questions for Jason on this? Or Jason, do you need to address it maybe in, in public at all?
Yeah. Yeah, I want to know what is the new headworks facility and why, why is it needed? I thought we had that facility under, in pretty good shape.
Well, I can't say, but, no. The headworks is in the budget. Remember back in the budget talks, this was the, the money was just preliminary. So there's not, it's not a construction design or anything of that nature. It's to get the head, it's just a preliminary review of the headworks to get it to where we need with the flows that we've got coming in. Headworks is our bottleneck of the whole plant. That's where we have our major issues, one that we have heavy rains. And as we keep with what we're doing with these new projects with Restore, the new line coming down Church Street, we've got a bottleneck, the way the headworks is now. So hydraulically, you know, we overflow the man, we've overflowed in the last month the manhole right before you get to the headworks.
Are you saying we got a plant that can treat it, but?
Still can't get the stuff there.
Have a hard time getting it in there, huh?
Yes, sir. And if you look at the headworks, and you've been there several times, Mr. Burrell, I know it's backwards. The, it comes in at the south and has to come all the way back around and go back again. It was just, the plant has been redesigned a couple of times on the flows coming in, and that's the reason. So this is the whole reason. That's just the short circuit of the plant.
They say you were looking to get an ARPA money for this, but, yeah, we got a lot of, we got a lot of other water and sewer projects as well, and it's piling this on. When is the list, when do we quit adding to the list and start working on the list? I mean, without adding to the list?
For water and sewer?
Yeah.
Never.
Never? Sometimes you got to have a master plan that says, if we get all these things done, we're caught up, at least.
Like window washing the Empire State Building, by the time you get to the top, you get to start all over again.
I won't, I won't completely disagree with that comment, but you can have your own opinion. But I'm saying, we should have a plan that says that we can serve all our customers at some point in time.
I agree. If you say the number of customers you have today get to that point, yes. Our problem, and it's just not Fairhope, my entire career, is you set that goal and you meet it, but growth has outrun what your goal originally was. So if you set that plan up for today, the loading on that plant's two and a half, three million gallons a day? Okay, that's what, that's what we're talking about. By the time that we get it in place, you know, I won't even be here. People retired and gone, but by the time it's in place, you're treating four to six million gallons a day. That's what I'm saying. You can't, there's no end to water and sewer because of growth.
I understand that, but at some point in time, when you've planned far enough, you can say, okay, we can meet the growth for the next fifty years, let's say. I mean, the treatment plant, for instance, can treat, probably a little less than half of what it's treating now.
It can, it's going to treat four, supposedly. That's what we're permitted. We're permitted to treat four million gallons a day.
Right. And we're treating how many?
Two and a half to three.
Right, so we're a little, little bit more than half the capacity, is what I'm saying is. So this is kind of the first that I've heard that we had a problem getting it into the plant after ten years?
We talked about it at the bunch of time. This was in, this was in the budget to do this project.
We're just trying to get it engineered so we can maybe get it.
Well, it's just in the budget to the preliminary engineering as well. It'll be, you know, once the preliminary is done and the engineers look at it, then, you know, it'll be, y'all just call to look at it again to see if it's something you want to do. My opinion is it's something you want to do, but that's for y'all to say.
Counsel, any more questions for Jason or any further discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Where are these people from? Who's Garver? Never heard of him.
Right, right there.
Okay, no offense, never heard of him.
He actually lives here, absolutely.
You live here? What, what projects have y'all done?
So we, Fairhope is a new business development area for us. We work in the northern part of the state very heavily, customers including Huntsville, Decatur, Jefferson County, Tuscaloosa, Tuscumbia, Auburn. So we're a firm that's very much present in the state, but we've not done work for Fairhope or for anyone else involved in county yet right now.
You've opened an office here?
Yes, yes.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item up is a resolution that the city council authorizes and approves the hiring of a new gas superintendent position to allow the current gas superintendent, Terry Holman, who is retiring with twenty-eight years of service to the city, to train the new employee prior to his retirement at the beginning of May. This will be beneficial to the city as well as the new hire. And once Terry Holman retires, the position will be defunded. So that'll just be temporary. Mayor covered this. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. I guess if it takes us longer than May to find somebody, Terry, you're not necessarily sticking around.
Yes, sir.
Fair enough.
I think you time to think about it.
All right, well, Terry, we, we said it, I know, in the work session, but we really appreciate your twenty-eight years of service. And we're mostly, we're really just glad that you are doing well. Now, I know you had a bit of a, bit of a scare there.
I thank the city for the opportunity.
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor on, on this? Or for Terry?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item up, number seventeen, is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and adopts the recommended termination of the franchise agreement with Bruce Cuddy to operate Bruce Cuddy pickleball instruction, the Fairhope Recreation Center, and the Mike Ford Tennis Center at Stimson Park, and shall take effect immediately. Pat, I think had covered this in the work session. Any questions for Pat or any conversation? I think they're just trying to clean up some rental agreements, and the next item or two will cover that as well. All right, no conversation? Any, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
We're not, if we do this and we go to some rental fee, we're not violating anything? I mean, or?
Yes, sir.
Kind of like the pool rental facility?
Our facility used to rent, just like a field though.
I'm assuming they're going to still do instruction on this.
That's why they have to rent a, that's why they have to rent a field, to be able to do that private instruction.
Next item on here, we'll cover that. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item number eighteen is a resolution that the Fairhope City Council hereby approves and adopts the recommended rental fee for pickleball and basketball lessons by, for the recreation department, and that shall take effect immediately. So just cleaning that up, from my understanding. Any, any questions or comments for Pat? Hearing none. Anyone want to make a motion in favor of this resolution?
So moved.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bruce Cuddy.
Hey, Bruce.
And I just want to know what those rental fees will be. It says it'll take effect immediately, but nobody's told me.
Yes, sir. Pat, what are those fees? Was it, I don't want to speak, I think I know it, but. Okay, twenty-five for a half-court, fifty for a full-court?
Yeah, so that would be twenty-five dollars for a pickleball court, which is half of a basketball court.
Okay.
For per hour, that's all per hour?
Per hour.
My only comment is, I'm charging people twenty-five dollars an hour. So essentially, it's a washout, and I have no, you know, I can't raise it to fifty dollars. That's my only thing. And the other thing is, and I talked to Pat and Mayor Sullivan, that I proposed to do some free orientation lessons for the city of Fairhope. Over a hundred and fifty people required. I have to break it into four sections. I'm doing free orientation, getting everybody involved in pickleball. And I can't charge, I can't use the facilities here. Basically, I charge twenty-five dollars for a lesson when I have to pay twenty-five dollars for the court. So essentially, I don't know where we're going with this. So anyway.
Um.
I got, I got to use the churches and my other offices, so.
I'll be happy.
Yes, ma'am.
Me and Mr. Cuddy did meet, but it's like I explained to him, we cannot allow somebody to use our facilities for any type of private game. He's also running a pickleball league that does not have insurance, that is charging membership fees, which I know they use those membership fees for social activities and, and those kind of things. But, you know, we're cracking down on other organizations who are using our fields and using our facilities, and this is just the same. I mean, we hate that we have to do it, but we have to leave those opportunities open for people who, you know, are paying members of like the rec center. So, I mean, the other pickleball courts are open to the general public. They're, you know, they're able to go out there and play. But if you're using our facility, if you're charging a fee, I'm sorry, it's going to be across the board. We're going to have to, you know, crack down on that.
Okay, I know we've got another item we'll bring up later this evening on that. Well, thank, thank you, Bruce. I don't know if that helped clarify anything. All right, counsel, I know, any further questions or discussions after hearing that?
Yeah, I was going to just add that, you know, I can sympathize with, with Mr. Cuddy and that he has a certain rate that he's charging. But to the mayor's comments, I thought, I thought the mayor did a good job of explaining that, that we have people that are paying dues to belong to our rec center. And when they don't have access to it, you know, they get upset. Not only, not only do they get upset, but they're not getting the value for their membership. We had this, we had this happen with also the, the swimming pool where someone was leasing several lanes in the pool. And we had a lot of people that were members of the rec center get upset that they couldn't get into the pool. And then we thought about, well, what's a fair value? So the, the rec board is trying to, they're not picking on anybody, but they're trying to come up with what are reasonable and justifiable rates for the use of, whether it be the pool, whether it be, whether it be the soccer fields, or whether it be pickleball courts or basketball courts. And I, I think that, you know, the rec board, I don't believe that I was at this meeting when they made this recommendation, but they probably put a lot of thought into it. And, 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 you know, I don't know if you were there, Mr. Cuddy, but I, I think that, you know, you may have to adjust your fees. I can't tell you what to do, but I, I think that it's probably a fair rate. And we have the same situation with somebody who was giving swimming lessons and, and, you know, I could, you know, like, like one of the members said to him, well, it's cheaper than building a swimming pool because you don't have to build a pool, insure a pool, buy pool chemicals, maintain the pool. You don't have to buy courts, you don't have to maintain them. They, they try to find a happy medium. I know that they, they put a lot of time into that.
I also don't, I mean, I appreciate what Mr. Cuddy's done. I mean, I've been there with Ashley Bell when we first, you know, built the rec center and started doing pickleball. And I know that that, that following of pickleball has grown. I know we're putting lights on our pickleball courts. I know a lot of people from here go to Daphne and Foley to play. And I do appreciate what he's done to grow that sport, but it's just, we're, it's growing pains. I mean, in the beginning, we did not have enough people, and we were able to accommodate a lot of different folks coming in, using our facilities. And we just got to a point where we cannot do that anymore. And again, we have to be fair for all. What we do for one, we have to do for all. So we have to make sure that we're being good stewards of the public's money and the facilities.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
We do not have a motion or a second.
I thought we did.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
Got one now.
Got one now, all right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Next item up is a resolution that all bids for the new ballpark bathrooms of Atlanta and Founders Park for the parks and rec department bid fourteen dash twenty-two are hereby rejected due to bids being considered being over budget and authorizes to rebid the project due to budgetary constraints. And I think the, the bid was really out of control, so. How bad was that, Pat, again?
The lowest bid was two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars for a seven-hundred-square-foot bathroom.
For a seven-hundred-square-foot bathroom. So.
It's not the bathroom.
Two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, it is, eh?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I know most of us have paid less for that, less for a house than that, so that's, that's definitely not going to fly. Any, any need for any conversation on that? All right, anyone willing to make a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. Item number twenty is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes the Fairhope Junior City Council to move forward with their Camellia Crosswalk Proposal on Bancroft Street with an estimated cost of four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Public Works Department has agreed to assist with some materials and base paint. And I think they had a target goal of, of trying to do this before arson crafts, but they do not want to be specific about the dates and timeframes because the last time they did that. about dates and timeframes, because the last time they did that, they wound up having to shuffle around due to the weather and had to come, keep coming back for approval, so, um, Jessica covered this in the work session. Does anybody have any questions? Jessica?
I'm moved to authorize.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, um, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number twenty-one is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the city of Fairhope and Local Government Services LLC to provide cable television franchise management advisory services and the service options chosen under this agreement shall not exceed eight thousand dollars plus out-of-pocket expenses shall not exceed five hundred dollars unless mutually agreed upon by LGS and the city. Kim covered this earlier and, and, um, this entity has been doing a good job for us, um, with telecom in general, just as a, as a consultant. And, um, seems like they typically have their fees paid by the telecom provider and I think MediaCom had made an initial proposal that would have reduced our revenue by about seventy percent, so, uh, ran this by LGS and, and they said, no, going back to renegotiate that for us, so. Any questions for Kim or for Councilman Burrell? He's been involved, I know, with, uh, with this entity. And Greg Fender.
I'm moved to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item, uh, number twenty-two is a resolution, the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number two of bid twenty, twenty twenty, which is, uh, lift station odor control chemical for the sewer department with Chem Station Gulf Coast to extend the reference contract until March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. Uh, total bid proposal of five dollars and seventy cents per meter gallon for an estimated annual cost not to exceed two hundred and thirteen thousand, two forty-eight and forty cents. And if, if, uh, y'all recall, Jason mentioned during the work session that this would be the last extension of this contract, that this would be going away and, if I'm saying that correctly, and that we would essentially be saving this amount of money on an annual basis moving forward, so.
Why is it going away? I mean, if it's going away, why is there any extended?
Well, yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm simplifying it.
Okay.
He did, he's saying, fine, we're putting in odor control at all the lift stations, that's what we're doing now, we're in the process of, so we're gradually dropping these off at the stations that has chemical treatment now. We've just dropped two offline the last couple of weeks. So, as we're doing, it's gonna take us a year to do this, so we won't be spending the two hundred and thirteen, we won't be anywhere near that, but we do need to keep in the places that we haven't installed. But if you'll notice on the south section, uh, when you just go up the hill past the mechanics, that green box on the side of the road for that, that's for the venting, for the air relief, for the sewer force main, and that's what we're, that's what those are, filters. We have to replace them periodically, but it will be nothing of this magnitude in cost. So we're, we're doing our very best to lower the cost.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that. Any further questions for Jason?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number twenty-three is a resolution that the city of Fairhope has voted to purchase one New Way Sidewinder thirty-one yard garbage dump truck with a twenty-seven yard body and a four yard tailgate or equivalent for Public Works Department and the equipment is available for direct procurement, uh, through Sourcewell Contract, which has been nationally bid and does not have to be let out for bid. The costs will not, will have a not to exceed amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And this was for Richard, no, this was, let's see.
This is the eighteen month lead time, so this is the one that spoke about the last meeting.
All right.
Well, this is the discussion we had a couple of meetings ago concerning trying to get another truck in route since they take so long?
Yes, we're, we're looking at the eighteen month delivery date.
Yeah, that's what it is.
It may not have an effect until twenty twenty-four budget.
Right.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number twenty-four is a resolution toward, uh, the bid to Sunbelt Fire Inc. for breathable air all-in-one compressor system for the Royce White Fire Station with a total bid price of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Uh, I think Chief had to go out on a call, but he had indicated they put this out for bid. Uh, got two or three bids back, this was the low bid, and this is for, um, replenishing their air tanks. So, Chief's not here, but, uh, any questions, any conversation on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
All right.
Hold, hold on a second.
Yes, sir.
They got two bids and this is the higher bid. I mean, it's a local company, but, I mean, it's probably insignificant, it's twenty-five hundred dollars more.
I think he, he made the comment that the first one did not meet specs.
Okay. Hey, I thought he made the comment that was the low bid, or, or the acceptable bid.
I see it now.
I mistook it for being the mean, that he meant it was the low bid.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good catch, though. All right.
Make a motion, but not a second.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, next item number twenty-five is a resolution that the city of Fairhope has voted to purchase one twenty-twenty-two Ford Ranger or equivalent for the Public Works Department and this vehicle will be the new mosquito spray truck and the typical vehicle is needed, uh, this type of vehicle is needed on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Contract and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost is not to exceed a budgeted amount of thirty thousand dollars and a mosquito truck will run, uh, five days a week during mosquito season, so Monday through Friday typically. Any questions or comments for Richard?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item number twenty-six is a resolution that the city of Fairhope has voted to purchase a VT Skoda and commissioning, um, for the wastewater treatment plant from Deep South Automation LLC as the sole source distributor, uh, for Trihedral Inc. and then authorizes procurement based on an option allowed by the Code of Alabama with a cost of eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and I believe there were some, uh, efficiencies and, and syncing up and piggybacking with the electric department using the same, uh, same software, so. Does anyone have any questions on this for Jason? Or any comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number twenty-seven is a resolution that the city of Fairhope has voted to procure one twenty-twenty-two Ford F-150 or equivalent for the electric department and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost is not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and three dollars and, uh, Jade's got several vehicles on here and I think he said this was gonna round them out for the year? All right. Any questions for Jade on this F-150? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number twenty-eight is a resolution to award the bid to Buy Ride Trailer and Fabrication Inc. for Dump Trailer for the gas department with a total bid proposal of nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. All right, any questions for Terry on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion, counsel? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number twenty-nine is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of McWayne Pipe for water main extension from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Inc. for the water department with a total not to exceed amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars pursuant to the Code of Alabama. And this is basically, uh, inventory or supply for the, for the twelve inch, uh, Saint Michael's Way project, so taking water out to that section out over by one oh four. Any questions for Jason on this? He covered this in the...
It says this was budgeted at that amount, we, we did have that in our budget, four hundred and thirty-three thousand?
This is out of our overall budget for the enhancement on the water.
So it's a portion of it?
Yes, sir.
This was alarmed that it was exactly the amount budgeted, so...
Yes and no, sir.
It seemed a little too good, huh?
So it's kind of one of those things, it's a part, it's a part of our, uh...
Overall system enhancement.
System improvements, yes, sir.
I sure would like to get that straight one of these meetings, every time I ask that question, every single time we come in here when we run across this. That I know that they didn't budget exactly four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. If the note, I wouldn't even have to ask the question if the, if the green sheet would say four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars out of the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand and we budgeted for pipe or something like that, just to let us know, because I don't know if that's blowing the budget or if it's, you know, I don't know where we're at. Can we get some more information on that? I ask that every single time.
Any further discussion or further comments on, uh, this proposed resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, counsel, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number thirty is a resolution that the city of Fairhope has voted to purchase one, uh, twenty-twenty-two Ford F-250 with a tool body or equivalent for the electric department and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and does not have to be let out for bid. The cost is not to exceed fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, any questions for Jade on this, uh, twenty-two Ford F-250 for the electric department? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, last vehicle for Jade is, uh, this is a resolution that the city of Fairhope has voted to purchase one twenty-twenty-two Ford F-150 or equivalent for the electric department and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. Cost not to exceed the budgeted amount of fifty thousand dollars. And, um, I believe Jade indicated that he was gonna be saving some money because they had originally earmarked a Tahoe, this would be his, for his vehicle, but not any available, so going with the F-150 and saving some money, so, thank you, sir. Any, uh, any questions for Jade or...
I just, well, I'm sorry, I don't want to roll or not, I don't know, but, uh, it, it, the green sheet says not to exceed fifty thousand and the vehicle is, uh, roughly thirty, let's see, was it thirty-four thousand in there? Thirty-three, so, you know, why is the resolution, yeah, well, I know, but the vehicle, but the resolution wasn't written, the resolution could be written not to exceed thirty-five, because we're given a blank check for fifteen thousand dollars. Not say that would happen, but I don't understand why we, we write the, uh, resolution for not to exceed amount of fifty.
I think they probably just pulled out the Tahoe and plugged in the F-150, but, go ahead, Kim.
Like, see things tightened up a little bit.
Well, what we've run into is they may have a budget amount, we, we went with one truck, a Dodge, and we placed the order and we come back and they can't get that Dodge, then we're coming back to you again, so we, we put equivalent, that one is a rare one that is that much different in price, but, um, that's what we're trying to do so we didn't have to come back, that we had a Dodge, a Ford on there, now we have to go and get a Dodge that we're, we're...
So you're illustrating my point, if they don't get this vehicle, they have to go out, now they can go back up to fifty thousand after we thought we were saving fifteen.
Right, but they've already got it in the budget at fifty.
Fifty, mm-hmm, that's what it's...
Which we've already approved.
Yes.
That's true.
We just, I mean, this, this past two years has just been an up and down, trying to get vehicles and we're trying to find a best solution and that's the reason we changed the equivalent.
It usually doesn't raise the flag, but when you see that difference, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
And that's very rare for, for a department had to come back and there's a Tahoe that's fifty thousand and they're gonna go to a vehicle that's fifteen thousand less. Um, we, I mean, we have had the case that they can't on one of these agendas, um, I think it was budgeted for five fifty, they can't get the five fifty, so they're going for a two, or a two fifty, three fifty truck. And so it is much less, um, savings on that.
Uh, uh, the point, counsel, this is that you approved a payment of fifty thousand. If they can't get it, they can spend up to fifty.
Right. All right, any further conversation or questions, comments on this item? If not, would entertain a res- uh, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item, uh, number thirty-two has been pulled from the agenda, the library board has not actually voted on this individual yet. I don't see any issue, but they just haven't gotten together as a group to vote yet. Next item, number thirty-three, is an application for beer and wine off-premises licensed by Yum Inc. Doing business as Fairhope Chocolate, uh, Julie, Julianne Jewels Roach, uh, two-three-zero-six-seven Main Street, Fairhope, Alabama, and you've been patient to sit through this meeting for this and Chief mentioned earlier that there were no issues whatsoever with your application, everything checks out, so, um, if anyone has a question for the chief, go ahead, if not, I would entertain a motion, uh, for approval of this application.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion or comment? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirty-four is a request, uh, by Bradish Sharp with Eastern Shore Repertory Theater Inc. Requesting permission to use Henry George Park from April twenty-eighth to May ninth for the spring performance. See Erin in the audience, so, um, I just will give her a plug that I have, whether or not my family's been in this show, I have been to every single one since, since she first did, uh, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat and it's, uh, one of my favorite events of the year and they really do an amazing job, so. Uh, chief and mayor said there were no issues with this timeframe, this is typically when they've, they've held this, so, um... Counsel, have you got any questions or comments for Erin or the mayor? All right, hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Erin. Item number thirty-five, this is one that we have voted to walk on, this is a resolution, uh, be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, that the city council approves the use of multiple classrooms at the Fairhope K-one Center as well as North Beach Park requested by Jesus Revolution LLC for the filming of Jesus Revolution during the week of March seventh through twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-two. An entry to the K-one center will be allowed beginning of February twenty-first for cleanup and set dressing. We had some representatives from the movie here during the work session and Jessica presented this with them. I think we've covered, covered any questions on this, but, um, counsel, if you have any further questions for Jessica while she's here, please go ahead and ask now, otherwise I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of, uh, resolution for Jesus Revolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. And item number thirty-six is also a resolution that we voted to walk on, I'll go ahead and read this again. I'll go ahead and read this again. Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the city council hereby approves and adopts the following for the city's recreational soccer league and BLAST and shall take effect immediately. Number one, BLAST will disassociate with the city. BLAST will no longer run the city's recreational soccer league starting immediately. BLAST will remove all city logos or references to the City of Fairhope sponsored, affiliated, associated with language on website, social media, and all marketing materials, and will change the name of the recreational league to youth soccer or something else similar from the term away from rec or recreational league. BLAST will notify all the parents, all those parents that have registered for Spring 22 Recreation League Soccer, that BLAST is disassociated from the city and is no longer a city-sponsored recreation league. Number two, references to BLAST's website, contact information, or other details will be removed from the city's website, recreation page, and other city media. City will announce no recreation league for the spring of 2022. Number three, starting immediately, BLAST will pay standard field usage rates in accordance with the most recent field use agreement for all use of fields by club soccer, tournament teams, travel, and the youth soccer or league formerly known as the recreational league for all practices, matches, lessons, tournaments, and other use. And number four, BLAST will turn over the contact information and data from its electronic files and software to the city for all recreation participants, as well as the soccer goals will be retained at the Fairhope Soccer Complex and become property of the city. BLAST will maintain the goals and equipment with documented expenses and receipts that will be reimbursed through the city with prior approval by the mayor or his or her designee. A credit may be provided for future field use costs for the equal value if approved by the mayor and should not exceed $5,000. All right, counsel, any conversation or discussion on this item? I know we've already discussed in work session, but.
Well, this puts soccer to bed for a few months. Geez.
For a minute. I see John and Hayden out here in the back.
They're smiling back there.
They've been very patient working with us, and I know there's been a lot of people on all sides that have spent a lot of time trying to get this right. I think the mayor did a good job in the work session of addressing this and kind of explaining from the city's perspective. We entered into an agreement 10 or more years ago that had good intentions, and maybe we didn't realize that we had maybe not done everything the correct way. So this is an attempt to clean that up. And at the end of the day, I think the main thing is we want the kids, the youth in Fairhope, to have the best possible option for soccer that they can. And wanted to make sure that we have a spring season. And I know BLAST is pretty far down the road with that process. The city's not in a position to put together something in the next few weeks to be ready for that. So this kind of clears up how we'll be moving forward during the spring season. But anybody has any questions for the mayor, Pat, for, I mean, I guess even Hayden or John? Feel free to ask or any discussion, or if someone wishes to make a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
All right. So we got a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any further discussion? All right.
Thank you all for working on this for so long.
Yep. Yeah, I think I was the last one involved, and I'm ready to have it completed. So thank you again to everyone who's worked on this. And we've got a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, hearing none. Motion passes. Now we have item number 37. It's public participation. If you wish to address the council about anything, now is your time to come forward and just give your name and address and speak your piece. Yes, ma'am. Please step up to the microphone. Happy Valentine's to you.
Of course, you know they burnt that poor man at stake. In any event, my concern is cargo shipping containers. I live at 503 Horton Lane, a beautiful little street in between Pecan and Fig, in the fruit and nut section, which some people probably say it's an appropriate place for me, but it's okay. We have lovely neighbors, and we have a major concern because we see these shipping containers coming into the neighborhoods, being plopped down in backyards. Is there any restriction?
Are these containers, like, for people moving?
No, these are shipping containers, the ones that come off the ships that the trucks haul out, that, of course, Mr. Buttigieg can't manage to get from California to here. But never mind, I shouldn't do that. In any event, they're coming into the neighborhoods. And one of our concerns is on Church Street, a gentleman bought a property, a house, and he wanted to build storage units. We have many of them here in the city, lovely units, where they're, you know, you drive in and you have a little garage door up and down, you know.
On Church Street? That would not.
Yes, on Church Street. And then they said, well, if you leave the house there, you can put those behind there. Well, now he's talking about moving in shipping containers for people to rent for storage. I don't think.
I don't think that they would be zoned for that. That doesn't seem like that would be a very good use of that property.
Yeah, but I would like to know who to report this to or who can assist me with this. All of the neighborhood sent grandma tonight, so.
If you, if Lisa, you got a guy in your dress, if you don't get her your bag and contact information, alcohol tomorrow, they'll be all that contact information. They're not zoned for that.
No, ma'am, we didn't feel it was. And so the neighborhood just, and of course, between gossip and hearsay and a few other things, and then they showed up at my house and said, well, you go to city council and see. And I said, well, but, you know, I have seen, we've got somebody over on Pecan that has one rusting in their backyard, which is an eyesore.
Could be a construction dumpster, maybe.
She kept talking a couple of different things.
No, no, it is a shipping.
Put them on Church Street, they're somebody, and they're not using them as the shipping container. A lot of people, they'll drop one off, people load it, and they'll ship it across.
No, no, sir, it's been there.
Somebody's using it basically for a utility building in their yard.
For a shed, and this fellow's going to, wants to put them in for people to rent. And we can't do that. You know, we felt absolutely not, so we needed some help. I really appreciate that. All right, because I don't want to raise hell too much, but we don't, you know, we got a nice. We have a nice neighborhood, you know, and really lovely people. Now, my second thing is, I'm so proud to live in Alabama and especially Fairhope, but all of my neighbors feel this way, and they wanted me to, you know, let you know that we are so proud of our police force and our volunteer, or the policemen here are just peaches. They're nice old ladies anyway. And the volunteer fire department, and one of the things that I want to bring up, this nice gentleman here with the utility people, I admire, because I'm an old businesswoman, I admire the quality of people that you hire down at the utility park, because we're kind of close to that, you know. And they've been tearing up our street like mad, putting in gas veins and everything for new houses coming in, you know. But the men are very nice, very nice. And I have been places, you know, where they, you know, have not been. But in any event, we all want to let you know how much we appreciate that, because it is hard to hire quality people that, you know, in any event, but we don't want any shipping containers in our neighborhood. You know, there's one over in the neighborhood down from Burger King. The gentleman's had in his yard for years, and it's horrible.
Well, it sounds like we got a solution in the works then tomorrow.
I don't want to get my tires slashed or anything, but.
Well, don't say it publicly then, just whisper it to Lisa.
Well, I get tired of my neighbors all showing up and saying, we got to do something, we got to do something. And I said, well, we'll go do it, you know. But I really do appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.